...exemplary, it's valor. And I want to take this time to read on behalf of the board and the superintendent, this letter of commendation. There's multiple folks that will get this honor tonight. The Bowlin County Board of Education is pleased to present this letter of commendation to Shannon Keenan Foley Elementary School. And award this letter of commendation for act of valor, July 17, 2019 is when this occurred, life-saving actions for Mr. Jerry Holly, presented this 13th day of August, 2019. Is Shannon here?
(audience applauds)
Yeah, there's several. Please stay here and we'll share a little bit more about this act of valor in just a moment. Jared Lin. Did I say that right? I didn't think I did. Jared Linney Foley Elementary School. And award this act of valor that occurred on July 17, 2019, life-saving actions for Mr. Jerry Holly. Christine Sealy Foley Elementary School, this act of valor, July 17, 2019. Kiki. Well, I will make sure that that's adjusted in the presentation. And I know you. Yeah. And I know you. Yeah, we will use it for the photo and make sure that's corrected. And last but not least, Dr. Michelle Moore Foley Elementary School, act of valor, July 17, 2019, life-saving actions for Mr. Jerry Holly. Mr. Holly here tonight? Mr. Holly, would you come on down? You're the one that needs the award tonight. Boss?
(inaudible). Okay. All right. Yes, thank you. I'm going to get you to say a few words, Superintendent.
Board, you might have heard something about this when this occurred in July. I believe we sent something out, is that correct, Terry?
That's correct.
To inform you of what happened. This happened at Foley Elementary. Michelle was there and all these wonderful people. And as a result, Mr. Holly's still here. So briefly, I just want her to let you know what the events that occurred.
Okay. I'll try not to cry when I do this, but yeah. Tonight was the first night that Ms. Sealy and Mr. Holly met. Back in July, we had a, Mr. Holly was waxing floors and one of the other custodians came and found him completely unresponsive in the hallway. Mr. Holly had turned blue and we were all in a panic. And sometimes when that happens, you don't know what you will do. But I've never been so proud of a group because they all came together and it took a little piece of me and a little piece of them to get to the point where we were able to resuscitate Mr. Holly until paramedics arrived. It was funny because it all just kind of fell into place really quickly when one of the custodial staff members, she tried to call 911. And of course, in the building, it didn't work because there's spots all over the building that you just don't have good reception. So she started to panic and scream and Ms. Sealy heard and Ms. Mouchay, her daughter, came to the office to let me know. And Ms. Sealy ran and immediately started to do CPR. At the same time that Ms. Mouchay came and got me, I'm not really sure why, but something just told me to grab the AED machine. I'd never done that before. I don't know if it was panic in everyone's voice or what, but I thought Mr. Holly had fallen because I had told him on several times, stay off the ladder, because he had fallen a couple of times previously. So as I'm running out the door, I'm thinking, he got on the ladder again. And something just told me to grab the AED machine. When I got there, I realized immediately that we needed to do something. So Ms. Keenan was on the floor beside him and I opened the AED machine and everything fell out of it into her lap. So she was a rock and she was able to immediately look at the picture because it was really loud. Everybody was kind of panicking and she put the AED machine patches in the right place. Then I kind of helped a little and did some breaths for Mr. Holly. And then Mr. Linney came up because he took my place as I ran to get the ambulance. If you want to have a little sense of humor in all of this, we were all in wax. So we were sliding all over the place the whole time. So in the end, I was glad that we were able to at least kind of keep a sense of humor about it at the end because he literally was sliding all over the hallway. So the next day after the paramedics got Mr. Holly to the hospital and he had the procedure he needed to have, I was so shocked when the administrators walked in the room with us and Mr. Holly was sitting up in bed. And I think that was the first time that I kind of started to cry because I was shocked. And we're so glad that it turned out the way it did because we love Mr. Holly and we're so thankful that we were able to do what we did. And I just want to say thank you to the board for putting the money into those machines because the doctor who did the surgery on him said the AED machine saved his life because there was no way that we were going to be able to kind of keep the compressions going long enough until paramedics came. He needed to be shocked. So thank you for investing in that because it made a difference in a person's life. So thank you.
Mr. Jones, did you want to add anything to this? I know that when these things happen, you have to be in touch with those at the state level, I think. So did you want to say anything to this?
I too would just like to thank the group because they all played a significant role. Without them all being there, this wouldn't have happened. Mr. Holly was in what we call cardiac arrest. He was not breathing. He was unconscious. And they applied the, started the CPR. That's what you need to do initially. Then they applied the AED and it shocked him. He was in an abnormal rhythm when the AED shocked him. Immediately put him back into a normal rhythm. And this is why Mr. Holly
...accommodation. There's multiple folks that will get this honor tonight. The Baldwin County Board of Education is pleased to present this letter of commendation to Shannon Keenan, Foley Elementary School. And award this letter of commendation for act of valor. July 17, 2019 is when this occurred. Life-saving actions for Mr. Jerry Holly. Presented this 13th day of August, 2019. Is Shannon here? Okay. Yeah, there's several. Please stay here and we'll share a little bit more about this act of valor in just a moment. Jared Lin. Did I say that right? I didn't think I did. Jared Linney, Foley Elementary School. And award this act of valor that occurred on July 17, 2019. Life-saving actions for Mr. Jerry Holly. Christine Sealy, Foley Elementary School. This act of valor, July 17, 2019. Kiki. Well, I will make sure that that's adjusted in the presentation. And I know you. And I know you. Yeah, we will use it for the photo and make sure that's corrected. And last but not least, Dr. Michelle Moore, Foley Elementary School. Act of valor, July 17, 2019. A life-saving actions for Mr. Jerry Holly. Mr. Holly here tonight? Mr. Holly, would you come on down? You're the one that needs the award tonight. Boss?
I'm gonna get you to say a few words, Superintendent.
Board, you might have heard something about this when this occurred in July. I believe we sent something out, is that correct, Terry? To inform you of what happened. This happened at Foley Elementary. Michelle was there and all these wonderful people. And as a result, Mr. Holly's still here. So briefly, I just want her to let you know what the events that occurred.
Okay. I'll try not to cry when I do this, but yeah. Tonight was the first night that Ms. Sealy and Mr. Holly met. Back in July, we had a... Mr. Holly was waxing floors and one of the other custodians came and found him completely unresponsive in the hallway. Mr. Holly had turned blue and we were all in a panic. And sometimes when that happens, you don't know what you will do. But I've never been so proud of a group because they all came together and it took a little piece of me and a little piece of them to get to the point where we were able to resuscitate Mr. Holly until paramedics arrived. It was funny because it all just kind of fell into place really quickly. When one of the custodial staff members, she tried to call 911. And of course, in the building, it didn't work. Because there's spots all over the building that you just don't have good reception. So she started to panic and scream. And Ms. Sealy heard and Ms. Mache, her daughter, came to the office to let me know. And Ms. Sealy ran and immediately started to do CPR. At the same time that Ms. Mache came and got me, I'm not really sure why, but something just told me to grab the AED machine. I'd never done that before. I don't know if it was panic in everyone's voice or what, but I thought Mr. Holly had fallen. Because I had told him on several times, stay off the ladder. Because he had fallen a couple times previously. So as I'm running out the door, I'm thinking, he got on the ladder again. And something just told me to grab the AED machine. When I got there, I realized immediately that we needed to do something. So Ms. Keenan was on the floor beside him. And I opened the AED machine and everything fell out of it into her lap. So she was a rock and she was able to immediately look at the picture, because it was really loud. Everybody was kind of panicking. And she put the AED machine patches in the right place. Then I kind of helped a little and did some breaths for Mr. Holly. And then Mr. Linney came up because he took my place as I ran to get the ambulance. If you want to have a little sense of humor in all of this, we were all in wax. So we were sliding all over the place the whole time. So in the end, I was glad that we were able to at least kind of keep a sense of humor about it at the end, because he literally was sliding all over the hallway. So the next day after the paramedics got Mr. Holly to the hospital and he had the procedure he needed to have, I was so shocked when the administrators walked in the room with us and Mr. Holly was sitting up in bed. And I think that was the first time that I kind of started to cry, because I was shocked. And we're so glad that it turned out the way it did, because we love Mr. Holly and we're so thankful that we were able to do what we did. And I just want to say thank you to the board for putting the money into those machines, because the doctor who did the surgery on him said the AED machine saved his life. Because there was no way that we were going to be able to kind of keep the compressions going long enough until paramedics came. He needed to be shocked. So thank you for investing in that, because it made a difference in a person's life. So thank you.
Mr. Jones, did you want to add anything to this? I know that when these things happen, you have to be in touch with those at the state level, I think. So did you want to say anything to this?
I too would just like to thank the group, because they all played a significant role. Without them all being there, this wouldn't have happened. Mr. Holly was in what we call cardiac arrest. He was not breathing. He was unconscious. And they applied the AED, started the CPR. That's what you need to do initially. Then they applied the AED and it shocked him. He was in an abnormal rhythm when the AED shocked him. Immediately put him back into a normal rhythm. And this is why Mr. Holly has survived and is here today. So again, I would like to say thank you to the board. We have AEDs throughout all of our schools. And without that, we couldn't have made it. So thank you.
Ms. Dolph? You'll get your wife a picture? Thank you. Got it? What a moment. Thank you. And let's give Mr. Holly and that team another round of applause. This concludes our letters of commendation for tonight.
I do think with that, I know I've talked to Terry a little bit and some of his folks, this is newsworthy and sometimes you don't hear all the wonderful things that happen. And I do think that our, this coverage needs to be had by our news media, you know, whether it's Fox 10, KRG, it doesn't matter. I think they need to come over and do a little segment on this about how schools encompass everything about, you know, employees and life. So wonderful story. Wow. Right now, that's all of our commendations. We have Tucker Dorsey here. Wanted to take a few minutes to talk about imminent future construction update. Tucker?
Thank you, Mr. Tyler. Good to see you again. Good to see everybody. See if I remember how to do this. I'm not sure. So I think a lot of you know my story. I feel so incredibly blessed after the commission to have landed in a really great spot, doing what I had wanted to do since I was a teenager and what I've been doing in most of my career here in Baldwin County, except for my eight years on the commission. Back in the real estate business. And now we're building subdivisions all the way across the Gulf Coast of, from Mississippi, Alabama, and Florida. So with that, I'm getting neck deep in everything that's happening in residential real estate. And certainly know how much the school system means to our community and how much it means to our industry and how much what the development community does affects what the school does, affects what the community is, and all that kind of works in a circle. And I just wanted to share for a few minutes what I'm seeing in the Baldwin County area, where we're seeing growth ahead, where we're looking at big projects. And I know Nathan Cox and his group couldn't be here tonight, but I know that we're all sharing information. I know that Bill Harbor and the Trueland crew are sharing information back and forth. And so we're all trying to be good partners and trying to make sure that y'all have the information to work with to be ahead of where we see things growing and want to help in that. So I just want to give a quick, what'd you say, Cecil, an hour and a half overview of the Baldwin County market. So on a, real quick on a national level, I think that we're going to, we're anticipated to see a little bit of a downturn, a recession, probably nothing major, not like we saw in 2008, but a little recession start in the next nine to 18 months. Mostly cyclical, but not alarming. Not anything, one thing causing it, not any one thing going to keep us from going into it. But that is also going to have an effect on Baldwin County. Now, our low swings in Baldwin County are usually not as low as the rest of the country, but they're not also as high as the rest of the country. But we've been pretty steady here, as everyone knows, for the last, as long as anybody can remember being here. I will say that in Baldwin County this year, all the data and the research and sales and everything that we're seeing, that we've peaked for activity for, I think, probably the next five to six years. The call is probably 2024, 2025, where we see an uptick again. And that's, our local sales data seems to report, seems to indicate that too. Now, it doesn't mean that the train's coming off the tracks and everybody needs to do anything. I just think the market needs to be aware of a slowdown. But it doesn't mean you're going to have a slowdown in students. We're going to still continue to grow just at a slower pace. The big difference that we're seeing now that's different than 2004, '05, and '06 is today we have real buyers. The market influx of the mid-2000s was not real buyers coming in here. It was more of a speculative market because of relaxed lending practices. Today, we have real people moving to Baldwin County for a lot of things. We're always going to have a lot of retirees come here. The reason I moved down here in 1994 was I could see opportunity in construction and residential real estate to be here ahead of baby boomers retiring. And as the increase in the number of baby boomers hit retirement age, they're going to, they're going to move to the Gulf Coast. So we'll continue to see retirement kind of edge up. I think retirement is constantly 1.4%, 5% growth in Baldwin County and can slip up to 1.8% in peak years. I think Baldwin County last 12 months probably grew at a rate of 2.8%. And I think we'll settle back down to what I would consider a little bit normal over the next few years, probably 2 to 2.3, if we have a real low year, maybe 1.8. But we'll continue to grow a little bit. One of the interesting things that I'm finding about the impact that y'all have on the next five to 10 years in growth and how we're, how the development in the real estate, the residential real estate industry is looking at the next few years, is y'all have tried to keep school enrollment low and we're trying to build schools everywhere to keep from having the big hoovers, as we've talked about before, Mr. Tyler. But I think that with the geography of Baldwin County, the impact that Malibu's having with the traffic there, that in my opinion, I think that Loxley and Alberta are probably the next big growth areas. The Alberta community is certainly excited about the school that's there and the high school and that's creating more community there. And that community is kind of feeding into itself, because people want to be around an active and vibrant community, which is why the Eastern Shore's been so successful. But as we, as the Eastern Shore continues to grow, the people that work and that really work and live in this county, it's getting less and less affordable to be on the Eastern Shore. So to have, for working families to have housing in Baldwin County, we're going to have to slide further to the east, which is why Loxley and Alberta and Lillian are more affordable. And Lillian's always kind of been a retirement area, because it was so hard to get to Foley Schools from Lillian. My neighbor just retired from y'all last year. She's a bus driver from Lillian and she's picking up kids at 6:00 in the morning to go to school in Foley and getting them, they're getting home at 5:45. Y'all, I mean, y'all know. That's a long day for a kid and most parents don't want to do that. Well, now with the Alberta school system there, it's going to change some of the dynamics for Alberta. And I think that lastly, with Loxley, not only that the county's going to continue to have to move east because of traffic and cost, when the mega site hits, which I'm still a firm believer in the mega site, that's going to, that's going to start to draw, that will draw population from I-10, 31 up towards Baymanet. And I think that'll, that'll do a lot for that triangle there where Nathan's group has invested at Stonebridge. And I know y'all are working on trying to solve some problems there and be ahead of that. So I think that opportunities are in front of us. I think it's going to slow down a little bit, but don't quit building classrooms, because we're going to keep needing them. So that's kind of a brief overview. I could go on about it forever, but I figured if y'all had any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. If we can be, if we can continue to collectively work together to figure out how to be ahead of these things, to be ahead of the information, so that we can be prepared for growth in population and growth in infrastructure and certainly classrooms. Because y'all being great, as I've always said, y'all being great makes for a great community and it helps everybody else. Not just in the, in the construction and real estate industry, but the whole community be a better place for us all to live. Because people are coming here for quality of life and the school system is delivering that quality of life and good people to live with.
Any questions for Tucker? Thank you, Tucker, for coming. Any questions you might have about anything that's going on with what he's, his role and what is, he's looking at or anything like that?
Well, if we can help or partner, we want to do it and continue the meetings and certainly the industry wants to be out in front of giving you all the information that you need without obviously giving away a competitive advantage that we might have. But the construction industry is about a $700 million a year industry and Baldwin County employs somewhere near 15,000 people. It's a big impact, just like y'all are. And we need to figure out how to work hand in hand, so that we're all solving problems together.
We always talk about open communication. Tucker, I appreciate you coming tonight, so that we can continue open communication, because you've got an eye for what's coming. So we appreciate that so much.
I want to continue to help y'all be successful, because y'all do a great job for our community and our students and certainly grateful for it.
Well, we appreciate that. I mean, I always continue to preach to groups I talk to that Baldwin County is only going to be as good as its school system, you know, as large as we are. I mean, it's, that's just a fact. I mean, our school system's got to be a quality system where people want to come and live here. And you're right, the quality of life. And so people are coming and they're going to continue to come.
Yeah. Well, thank y'all for your service. Certainly appreciate it. Good to see you.
Thank you, Tucker.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. John Wilson with their financial update. If y'all happen to try to get John on the phone tomorrow, hold that right there, John. He is attending first day kindergarten with his daughter. He says he's not going to get emotional and, you know, everything. But I can see it building already, so your CSFO might not be at his best tomorrow if you ask him to crunch some numbers.
All right, back to the numbers. No, no, we're excited. I'm already getting a little bit of anxiety thinking about the car drop offline, so. All right. I'm going to be, I'm going to be sure, a lot of interesting things happened this month that were a little bit atypical. I'm going to kind of drill down into that. And then in about two weeks, you'll get me for an hour plus and we'll go through a long budget hearing. So I'll just go ahead and warn everybody. Be prepared. But it'll be good.
We'll prepare for a packed house.
Yeah, I'm sure everyone will come and just can't wait. That's right. All right, our financial update, as of the end of July, 262 million in revenue, about 245 million in expenditures. I'm going to kind of jump around a little bit in these slides, as I kind of go through some of the particulars that happened this month. You can see as we, we have two more months left in this fiscal year. So we're about 83% done as of this financial report. One of the things I'll jump out, you know, everything's in line with what we would expect year-to-date. My pointer's running out of batteries. But anyway, on the other expenditure line, you see 98%. And I'm going to talk through that as well. We had to make a $1.2 million transfer of the local school balances to Guff Shores. Previously, if you look at the, am I, does anybody have a, Homer, do you have a pointer? Anyway, you can see on the admin side, here, I'll point to it.
The negative right here. So you'll see a big expenditure in June. And we'll see we corrected it in July.
So when we first did it, it was coded as like a legal judgment code that would fall under the GNA. That wasn't correct, so we corrected that and we put that in the other expenditure. So I wanted to talk through that. Also, you can see, if you look at the top line there, you can see state revenue. Normally, you know, you can see we're anywhere from about, you know, 2.9 to 3.4 million per year. You can see in July, it was 21 million. And so before anybody gets excited, ooh, thank you. Yay. Before anybody gets excited, yeah, it's not just a magical excess of money that came. That was the $8.3 million from the advancement technology funds. That, we have not gotten the bill for the Chromebooks yet. That bill's probably going to be $9 million. We'll probably get that in the next couple of weeks. So, you know, I don't want, you know, you can see our fund balance, and I'll jump over there a little bit. Our fund balance popped up here, which is, which is very atypical for this time of the year. But the reason is because $21 million total in state funding for this year. So we'll see that pop back down when we get the invoice and we have to pay the $9 million cost for the Chromebooks. Also, in July, we received $2.5 million check for the proceeds for the sale of the K-1 Center. So that was factored in as well. I'll be moving those funds to capital projects and we'll be using that to help offset some of the costs of the ninth grade academy building. So all that being said, I, you know, I know we, I didn't want anybody to get too excited about the sudden jump. That's really a timing difference. We're going to see that kind of continue to trend downwards. I'm still estimating that we're going to finish the fiscal year maybe around anywhere from 50 to 52 million dollars in the bank. So that's going to be still very strong, two-month reserve balance. Local revenue, we ticked up a little bit compared to previous months, and I'll kind of talk about that in a second as well. Well, I'll go ahead and jump to it real fast. But you can see our local revenue. So sales tax is still about flat, but it's not as far down as it was previously from a year-to-date standpoint. We also, in part of the local revenue, I'm jumping around a lot, we got the $350,000 EAC, Fairhope appropriation that came in July. So there are a lot of one-time funding things that came in July. That's currently used for some personnel positions at those schools. I probably agree with Tucker. I do think we've probably topped out. We'll see how we finish the year with sales tax revenue. But we're really trending towards either, it's pretty much looking like it's going to be flat. I will go into a lot more detail in two weeks at the budget hearing about that, but you can kind of see where we're trending so far. For avalorum, you can see we've received about all the avalorum that we had budgeted. Like I said before, I usually take about $2.5 million off of what the county says we're going to collect. And it seems like from being ultra-conservative, we've kind of hit the mark on what we actually collect. So fool me once, but you can't fool me twice. Probate, you can, we're still on track to receive what we're estimating, around $4.4 million for the end of the fiscal year. So I think that was all that I had for July financial update. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, John. And I know that that first of your two public hearings will be, that's the 27th or 28th?
Yes, it'll be Tuesday, August 27. I think we're going to have a special board meeting right at the beginning at 4:30 or 5:00.
Right, Louise.
At 5:00. And then I'll go, I'll go right into the budget hearing from there, so.
Mr. Chris Mary, that's all we have, the agenda items. If y'all want those read to you, I'll be glad to read those to you. We don't have a whole lot this month, and I hope you're not upset about that. But we'll go ahead. And you see the amendments to the agenda. Number three, number four, number five, transfers. Number six, employment. Number seven, extra work. Number eight, purchase of textbooks for AP Calculus. And number one, transfer reassignment. You see Agenda Item 1, dissemination of fee scheduling procedures for records request. Sarah Young worked with us on that, in Shimati and with DeJoyce and Hope about making sure that we were properly, people were coming and working off the goodness of our heart a lot of times, but there needs to be some fees responsibility when we're printing stuff off for people. And so we just kind of put it more solidly in ink. Approval of contracts for 21st Century Learning. Leave of absence of personnel. Agenda Item 4, retirement resignations. of absence of personnel, Agenda Item 4, retirement resignations, Agenda Item 5, transfer, intent to transfer, Agenda Item 6, employment of personnel, Item 7, extra work for extended periods, and then Item 8, a purchase of textbook for AP Calculus. As always, any questions, comments, or concerns on?
Are those textbooks on calculus new? Is that new this year? They were under adoption?
Um, the Stephen Dawes and the Matt Morris study in 2017, and the new course of study had extra students. So, we had to purchase new books, study proof of standards.
Board, just a little information for y'all. Spent some time at the Virtual School Site today with the state fire marshal and the local fire marshal in Daphne. Of course, Walter McKee, along with Frank and others have been in touch with Walter McKee, who's been in touch with Frank Barnes, state building inspector. Right now, the Virtual School will not, they will not allow it to be occupied at this time. I did call Holly. Holly is, she's fine. She's, she's, didn't need to be resuscitated. She's, she's okay. She will just continue right now at the Fairhope campus. We still have the Gulf Coast, the Guff Shores campus and the Baymanet campus. We spent about two hours there, and, you know, there was, there were some structural issues that the state fire marshal had concerns with that had not been approved. And Frank knows all this too. I mean, Frank can speak for himself on this, but hadn't been approved by the State Building Commission yet. And there were several concerns from Mr. Tally, the state fire marshal, about a few things of life safety there that, but all of this, and Frank, you can jump in anytime, all of this stuff, I think, is easily correctable. I mean, in a very quick period of time. The elevator's not really an issue, he said. And I'm, I mean, Frank's questioning too, this elevator company. I hope we don't use them again. But anyway, we can occupy, once we get the certificate of occupancy from the building commission and we clear up all the fire marshal issues, we can occupy it without the elevator, you know. And, you know, the elevator's probably another, what, two months out, Frank, or?
Month and a half.
Month and a half out. So, but Frank, if you wanted anything, in other words, we made a passionate plea to Mr. Tally. We told him that, you know, basically I told him I'm superintendent, I'm responsible. You know, undoubtedly, we haven't punched all the list, and we didn't do all the things we needed to do to get the building commission and the fire marshal to agree with what we were doing. And, you know, so we're going to continue to, we're going to do what they ask us to do. And we're hoping that that gets resolved pretty quick. And I know Frank's all over it. Frank, any comments or anything you want to add to the board?
The plans that they're asking for are, was submitted to the building commission on Monday. One of the things, the catwalk, the balcony, where the elevator's going to be installed. It's already there. I think that's the big hindrance to them, that it has not been approved by them as far as being installed. But we explained to the architect it was all fast-paced, and he understood what we're doing, and he agreed. We could go ahead and move forward, doing a lot of this stuff in-house and having some of it subbed out, majority of it done in-house to expedite everything. So, I don't think we're far away. I wouldn't say it's cosmetic, but it's very minor things as far as, on the sprinkler pipes, you had some of the heads that had some paint residue from the back, in the back section. And we weren't even trying to occupy that. But they were saying that without new heads that you couldn't occupy the front also. So, that's the stuff we're working through tomorrow. And we'll actually have the sprinkler contractor out there. Fire alarm wise, everything's up and going. No issues there. The stairwells, we put some partitions up, actually so nobody could go up to the, from the bottom to the top. We thought that was the right thing to do, and we were instructed. But then we found out that they didn't want us to do that. So, we'll be taking that down tomorrow. And, because it would impede one of the exits. But other than that, if the sprinkler company has the parts, I feel like we'll be ready waiting on the, we'll be finished with our part by the end of week, no later than Wednesday of next week, depending on the sprinkler parts, the heads and stuff, that work being done and area of the correction that they asked for. So, all we'll be waiting on is the approval for the building commission on the catwalk. And what happens there, they will not come and inspect it. They be, the building commission will not come and inspect the catwalk until the plans have been approved by the building commission as far as the review process at Montgomery. So, as soon as that's done, we schedule, I talked to the inspector today, he said he would schedule an inspection right away and get down there and we'll get it to the bottom of that, and then we'll be able to occupy the front section. And we're only a few little items away from being able to occupy the back section also.
So, as long as the building commission takes to get things done, we feel like it should be just a quick turnaround.
We do. And when I talked to him today, the local building inspector that serves our area, he's aware of everything, and Mr. Barnes and his officer are aware of the urgency to try to do it. So, they're just, they're just covering their bases, and I feel like it'll be a quick turnaround.
And without the elevator, the catwalk is really not usable anyway. So, why don't we just broke that off?
Well, because one of the exits that you would use on the northeast.
You have to go under the catwalk to get to one of those exits, since it hadn't been, you know.
And we, Randy was there. He pleaded the fact that you, we've just quartered that off. But then you don't, that eliminates a couple of the exits you have. So.
It, I know John Wilson was there. I was there. Randy Ganey was there for Frank. John Gray was there. We, Chris Elliott was there. And we, we basically bared our soul and just said we got about 350-plus students. And, you know, they all don't come in here at one time, but they're in and out. And Mr. Tally was sympathetic, but he just says, "Mr. Tyler, you might have 10 or 15 students in here. You've got your faculty." He said, "I've got issues, but until the state building commission gives that certificate," he said, you know, "I just can't sign off on some of this life safety stuff." So, Frank's aware of all this. We're moving as quickly as we can and to see if we can resolve this. But I just want to let you know Holly's fine. She went on her Facebook page. She communicates with all those students virtually, you know. And so, it's going to happen, but it's just not going to happen. We want it to happen.
I think you said in your video it'd be about a month, right?
Well, I just, a day goes to a week, to a week to a month. So, I don't know if I was referring to the Virtual School, but anyway.
But the extra patience applies to all.
It'll be, it'll be great.
And Loxley, the new module we put there, it was all approved. So, they've got their COs, they're, they're ready to get.
You need to go by Loxley and see that, that building right there. It just almost looked like it'd been there for 10, 15 years. So, it's good. I'll be at Orange Beach in the morning, being a new feeder pattern, just opening up with our 7th through 10th graders. I want to be there, watch that traffic flow, go in, see some of the parents bring their children, and see how they get started. So, that is exciting. I'm going to leave there and go to Alberta to see how they're coping there. At Alberta, Branton said he's already got everything ready to go. If you hadn't had a chance to ride by the Baymanet School, I rode by there yesterday. Just took my time, sat in front of it, rode around it. That is a beautiful school. I mean, the brick, that's a beautiful brick. Mike, I don't know how you feel about it. That, that school is beautiful. I mean, to heck with red brick. I like red brick, but that, that's beautiful brick. And that is going to be a definite landmark in Baymanet. And that's close, Frank. I know we're got, we said we're going to give them some time to get that done. And Alberta's the same way. So, we're, we're getting there. We're getting there. So, I appreciate y'all's patience and understanding. And any questions or anything on any of our construction projects or opening of school?
Is that module in Loxley, is that, is it going to be permanent, is not adding the wing, keep the vehicle?
We own it, Mr. Mark. We purchased that one. Yeah, I'm not sure what our plans are after we kind of.
If you look at the layout of Loxley, it's, it's not very conducive to actually to build there. I mean, we've got property, but you got a new, what they call the new wings from, I think, '92. I mean, it's, it's an older wing, the one with the metal roof. Then you've got an extremely old gym and an old cafeteria in the back, and you've got flat tops. I really don't know, the director, the board's giving me and Mr. Tyler to try to make something under one roof. I don't know if you would actually try to build there or not. So, to answer your question, I think it's long-term enough till we come up with an area where we'll be building in, in Loxley, to accommodate if we're going to do a new type of school. But I think we would have to look closely at what it would cost to try to get that facility up to our standards and accommodate the number of students you want to accommodate.
We're looking at it. We'll be talking to you more about that, Mr. Mark, as far as our plans going in the future with some of these facilities. So, but it's there right now for the long haul, as long as it needs to be. And any other questions on any of our facilities going on or first day of school tomorrow?
Everybody ready?
We are.
I'll probably be.
All right.
Well, Board, thank you. Appreciate your support, and that's all I have, Mr. Chris.
Beating good.
Don't call me. I'll be in Congress.